Ms. Eriko?
Here.
Ms. Patel?
Here.
Ms. Maroney?
Here.
Ms. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Podolsky?
Here.
Ms. Matiker?
Here.
Board President, Mr. Shi, Mrs. Peng, and Dr. Chen.
Thank you, Dan. Opening Statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education's administrative offices. Copies of these notices were also sent to the Home News and Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have Mr. Ross come up, and we have some student recognitions. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, President America. Good evening, Dr. Bragan, members of the Board of Education, community members, parents, students. Thank you for your opportunity to speak briefly here tonight. I'm pleased to recognize a group of Edison High School students who came together to support a family from the EELC in the most dire time of need. They mobilized their student voice and put aside their own sadness to raise money and send messages of love and hope to the family, and even worked to care for our staff as well. These young women and men acted in the words and manner of Dr. Martin Luther King, who said, "The time is always right to do what is right." If the Edison High School students will please stand and turn to the camera. Thank you so much. I am very proud to be your principal. All right, you made me see that. These young Eagles received certificates and a reception earlier today, and thank you again to the families for trusting us with your children's education. Mr. Eriko.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Board member comments?
I would just like to say thank you very much from all of us for the wonderful work you do, the staff, and the children, and the students for what they did for the community in such a trying time. Well-deserved recognition, with very nice reception that we just had a little bit ago with some cake, coffee, and water. Again, thank you to everyone. Well, well deserved. Thank you very much.
All right, before we dismiss everyone, the students that are here, we want to hear from our student representatives from each high school, and I'm sure everyone else would like to hear. So since we're in Edison High School, we're gonna have Stacy Zen, senior class president, come up and tell us what's happening at the Eagles Nest.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Zen, and I'm the senior class president at Edison High School. First, I'd like to give a huge thank you to the Board of Education for our amazing principal, Mr. Ross, for the opportunity to be here tonight, and for me to tell you all what's great about Edison High. So first, I'd like to go over that the Edison High School theme this year is charity and community. So with all the clubs and organizations and events that happen at Edison High this year, the students have provided their utmost dedication to supporting the community and, of course, to red and gold. So first, I'd like to talk about the amazing senior class that has raised over $3,500 this year already in student council funds for prom that will be taken closer later in May. And in addition to all the fundraisers that we have been doing, we have been showing our utmost eagle pride, which was through the Hall of Decadent Competition, which in early December, where students in all grades competed against each other and designed the main hallway as best as they could. And I'm very proud to say that the senior class won first place with our wall decorated titled "The Timeline of Our Lives" and a picture shown up there. And that's just a few of the students that came out to support the senior class. And lastly, the senior class is currently working with the juniors in preparation for the talent show, which will be taking place in mid-March. So without the seniors' success, we'll be without the council department. The council department has done so many things for our seniors so far, which included EHS alum day on the 5th, where a bunch of EHS alum came back and talked to the students about all of the things that Edison High has done for them in preparation for college. And in addition to that, they did incidentals. As well as two weeks ago, the council department hosted its Career Speaker Series, which included professionals from detective law enforcement, IT systems administration, positions assistants, and so many more careers, which helped students guide their way into a field of interest. And next, we have General Student Council. And General Student Council just this past Friday had their dodgeball for charity event, and in that event, we had a very fun night of dodgeball and raised over $1,000 for charity. And they're also currently working on the Mr. EHS event, which was a very fun male beauty pageant, and that will be taking place in May in the auditorium. And next is National Honor Society. The National Honor Society has been doing so much for charity, and that includes their winner project called the Hope for the Youngest Project, that will raise over $1,000 for the veterans by the end of the year after starting all their wristbands. Just in December, they inducted 57 inductees to the National Honor Society, and in that same night, they collected over 40 toys for Toys for Tots and collected over 250 cans for the Hands of Hope soup kitchen in Edison, New Jersey. Next up is UNICEF. UNICEF is the equivalent of charity at Edison High. In just the month of October, they raised $200 for Trick or Treat for UNICEF, donated over 600 pairs of socks for S-October, and made over 200 peanut butter and jelly sandwiches after school at their peanut butter and jelly sandwich making drive for the Elizabeth Coalition House in New Jersey. And just this past Friday, we had our annual blood drive, where over 90 student volunteers donated blood throughout the school day in the big gym. And on top of all the charity work that we do, Edison High is a home for diversity, and I am very proud of that, and that is shown through clubs such as the Spanish Club and the National Chinese Honor Society. And as president of the National Chinese Honor Society, we created the Chinese Culture Club this year, where students that do not take money get to join this club and learn about different cultures in Asia. And we started the first ever donkey meeting contest in November, and that was a lot of fun. And on January 31st, we had a Chinese New Year potluck in the media center, and we actually partnered with JP Stevens National Chinese Honor Society, and as we were friends in both sides of town, get together and celebrate the holidays and make new friends. And next month, on the 13th, we will be having our annual karaoke mic drop competition in the media center. And on top of all of that, the band program continues to succeed with a jazz ensemble and a wind ensemble, and the dates of our competitions are listed above. And our indoor competition has won second place at Bridgewater Stadium, and our jazz shows will continue in the winter. And in addition to all the thriving clubs at Edison High School, we have been having also rising clubs that have been doing such a good job promoting Edison High School in the past year. And that includes the Film Club, where they capture student life and attend a bunch of student events, and the New Digital School newspaper called The Eagle's Eye, which is shown over there, and it's a way for students to conserve money and paper while releasing news about the world to the student body as well as parents. And lastly, I'd like to talk about the athletics program at Edison High. Just this month, the boys' basketball team won their first division, GFC Division title in school history, and just yesterday, they won the quarterfinals of the GMCs, and it will be advancing to the semifinals later this week. The HHS sports track team, four-by-800-meter rower, qualified for the Balance Regional National Competition, and Weston Cheer has traveled to Dallas this month and received fifth place in the nation. So there are some of the upcoming events at Edison High School, including a STEM Academy, Design Day, try-in, and National Art Honor Society inductions, the talent show, and the spring new school, which will be Guys and Dolls this year. So that is our year so far, and the school has not done with all the charity and community work that the school has done so much for the students, and we can only hope to give back even more. So thank you so much, and that's what's great about Edison High.
Thank you, Stacy. One thing before we leave, Mr. Ross, can we go back to that first slide? Next one, I'm sorry. How did Mr. Ross get his face painted on the wall? I see that. That was the first thing I noticed. How did that happen? Dr. Shalopp, you have your face on the wall in J.P.?
No.
Not yet?
Yeah.
All right, I hope you do someday. Mr. Ross is that special kind of principal. All right, thank you again, Stacy. Thank you, Mr. Ross, for all the Eagles and what they do for the community. Thank you. All right, up next, we have the representative from John P. Stevens High School, Kyle Kowalczek, John P. Stevens High School Student Council's second vice president. Come on up, Kyle. Tell them what's going on in Hawk Nation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Kowalczek, and I'm the JP Stevens Student Council's second vice president. I'm glad I'm able to be part of this meeting tonight and share to you all the amazing aspects of our school and the people who have made it possible. On January 29th, JPS hosted the Math Honor Society inductions into the JP Stevens Mu Alpha Theta chapter. We are proud to see a group of students so dedicated to mathematics and hope to see them help others in need through tutoring. Our school participates in many local and national projects. Our students are recognized yearly for their time, hard work, and passions. One student, sophomore Jacqueline Trotman, was featured on a box of Girl Scout cookies for her efforts with the Girl Scout troop, a true representation of our determination and culture. JP Student Council recently held a masquerade ball on February 7th. It was a chance for students to unwind and dance with a new DJ and creative theme. It really brought our community together, and Student Council hopes we can continue this trend. JP establishes relationships between our peers and our diverse populations. One example is that of our JPS Unified Team. The JPS Unified Team beat crosstown Edison High rivals in the first-ever JP Edison Unified Basketball Game. It was an awesome event and a great precedent for many more to follow. JP has a lot of outstanding young women making an impact in our state. Softball and soccer player senior Caitlin Clemens received the National Girls and Women in Sports Award at Seton Hall. Senior Megan Duffy hit 1,000 career points in her game against Old Bridge. The John P. Stevens Music Program has always been nationally recognized. Our orchestra and band are holding their winter concerts this February. Our musical talent is highlighted through such amazing programs presented by Dr. Verdi, Mr. DiNaccola, and Mr. Zzeli. Both performances were spectacular, and I can't wait to see what our music program's done next. As our winter sports come to a close, the perseverance, tenacity, and effort put forth by our athletes is unstoppable. Boys' and girls' lacrosse, softball, baseball, golf, boys' volleyball, and boys' tennis will be starting in March. Good luck to all athletes. Our sports are a reflection of our hard work, and the best of the best will be out to play this season. The John P. Stevens Spring Musical will be running on March 12th to 14th and 19th to 21st. The play, An Addams Family Musical, will certainly show how much of a family we really are. Here's the best of the actors and the crew who made it possible. Mr. JPS is on March 27th. As a contestant, I can say that all the boys are really excited to show their skills and talents acquired and improved upon here at JP. The show will be a fun night for friends and family to come and watch him sitcoms, which is our theme. As a senior, I can proudly reflect that I have been in such a compassionate school for four years. We work hard to make our community a better place, and these last few months and upcoming months will certainly test our skills. I feel like I have become a better person during my time at such a wonderful school. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, Dr. Shalopp, for keeping us up to date on what's happening in Hawk Country. Thank you very much.
Ralph.
Yes, comment?
I would just like to thank you for making sure that this has been taking place. I'm so proud of the students that are coming and letting us know what's going on at the two high schools. It's such an added positive move forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well deserved. We need to know what's going on in our schools and find young students like this, young men and women, will let us know every month, as long as I could help it.
Good.
All right, any other comments? Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a two-minute break so we can let the honorees take off and maybe go out and celebrate a little bit, and maybe friendlies, a little ice cream. But we're gonna take about a two-minute break. Thank you. All right, we're gonna resume the meeting. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 6th, 21st, and 27th of 2020? Mrs. Conway and Ms. Podolsky. Vocal? Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes, for January 6th, and abstain from the 21st and 27th.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
So carried. Okay. Board Secretary report.
Need a motion?
Oh, we need a motion. I'm sorry, I thought you had to present. Motion. Ms. Patel? And Ms. Conway. Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, at this time, we're gonna open it up to public comment on resolutions only. Resolutions only. Anyone would like to make comments on resolutions? All right, so you know? Okay, I need a resolu-- I mean a--
Motion.
Motion. There you go. Thank you, Ms. Conway. On personnel labor relations and personnel report only, on number one only. Any comments before we-- Okay? Motion, please. Ms. Conway? And Mrs.--
Man, losing my morals. Maroney.
Maroney, that's her. I'll get the names. I should write them down. Ms. Matiker--
I've known you for 10 years.
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolutions, administration, A, B, C, and D. Comments? Yes.
I would just like to make a comment that the Youth Art Month, if that could be publicized and we could have some kind of showing of the fabulous work that's going on, at least have some kind of gallery that month, I really would look forward to that.
Okay. Dr. Bragan took that note down. All right, any other comments?
Mr. Board President, can I make a comment?
Sure can.
I just wanted to thank the ETA and the other association leadership in working to get that settlement for the health insurance. I mean, a lot of those events happened before I got here, but I know they worked diligently, especially the ETA presidents, President Jeff Bowden and the Vice President Matt Revnik, and I just wanted to thank them personally and all the associations for their collaboration in coming to that settlement agreement with the issues with the health insurance. Thank you.
Also, I think we need to thank the insurance broker.
Absolutely.
They worked diligently with the union representation to come to this solution, so that's a good thing that we're all working together, so I just wanted to make that comment too. All right, motion, please.
Ms. Conway? Ms. Maroney? Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Curriculum and Instruction, number three, A, B, C, D, and E. Motion or comments first?
NF.
Sorry. NF. Was it an F? A through Fs.
First of all, not on my paper. Only goes to E.
All right, we'll go to F. That's all right. So A, B, C, D, E, and F. Comments on any?
Where's F?
Motion?
Where's F?
I don't know. Where's F? We're missing F here.
Professional development?
Professional--
Oh, professional development? Yeah, just not listed here. Oh, E is professional development on ours. Go through the A. What's A?
Summer school schedule.
Okay.
B? High School Program of Studies.
Oh, see, they made it A1.
Oh, okay, that's where it was.
That's what they did. They did A1.
Oh, okay.
All right, so A1, B, C, D, E, they're all-- There's nothing new being added.
No, no.
Okay, nothing new being added. Everything's there. So motion, please. Ms. Patel and Ms. Podolsky. Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Item four, A and B. Comments? Motion. Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
No, motion.
Oh.
I volunteered. And Ms. Conway. Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes. And Finance. Finance resolution is just A. Any comments on Finance? Okay. Motion, please. Ms. Conway and Ms. Patel. Ms. Podolsky? I mean, no, Ms. Matiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes, but I abstain on check number 156827.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Maroney?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
So carried. Okay. Community reports. You are gonna add an extra one. We had one meeting tonight, Ms. Maroney. You'll be able to present?
I have the community relations, the other one, the one, the meeting we had tonight would be--
Next month. Okay, good. All right, so community relations, please.
The first meeting of the Community Relations Committee was February 11th. In attendance, Ms. Conway, Ms. Podolsky, Ms. Polakowski, and myself. The purpose of this meeting was to define the focus of the Community Relations Committee. We discussed the feasibility of the Community Relations Committee helping to publicize the upcoming bond referendum. However, by the time that committee would get organized, the vote would be upon us. Ms. Polakowski explained to the committee that Dr. Bragan has taken many steps to inform the community as to why passing the referendum is important. Ms. Podolsky looked at some neighboring districts' websites to see how they define their Community Relations Committee. The question for debate is should we proceed as the former Human Relations Committee, or should we do more community-based programs to encourage parent involvement and being more optimistic for a positive outcome? In the last few weeks, two middle schools held successful events for parents to learn about important issues facing their children. Woodrow Wilson Middle School, under the direction of Wendy Hurwitz and Principal Jennifer Brevins, as well as the wingman champion teachers Marjorie Papa and Cynthia Gordioso, created a program called Parent University: Help Your Child Thrive in Middle School. The keynote speaker for the event was esteemed Dr. Maurice Elias, a world-renowned professor of social-emotional learning who teaches at Rutgers University. He addressed the large audience on how to help students develop self-awareness, self-management, and responsible decision-making. Following Dr. Elias's speech, the parents went to several breakout sessions on other topics. Herbert Hoover Middle School, guided by Principal Brian McGrath and his highly motivated staff, held a health and wellness event for parents of middle school children. Various vendors from the area came and distributed information on the things that they can offer to students. There were childcare facilities, karate schools, mental health providers, among many others, who gave out information on what they offer. The parents then divided into breakout discussions, the most popular of which was how to prepare financially for your child going to college. Mr. McGrath stated that over 150 parents attended this evening because the topics were relevant to their family lives and concerns in their children moving forward. Ultimately, the Community Relations Committee would like to encourage and plan more of these types of events to encourage discussion and provide valuable information to the community on issues relevant to all phases of school life. The plan for moving forward is to contact building principals to help us find faculty volunteers to develop topics that are current and relevant to all facets of student lives, be it social, educational, psychological, financial, and health-related, that would engage parents in meaningful activities that would bond the community in productive ways. The committee is hoping to roll out its first program in April.
Thank you, Ms. Maroney. Curriculum and Instruction Committee, Ms. Matiker.
Thank you, Ralph. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on February 7th at the Education Center. The meeting started at 2:30 PM. In attendance were Yuna Chen, Elizabeth Conway, Falguni Patel, Gail Pavlaske, Banendra Mahabir, Patricia Ellerman, Maritza Mosley-Evils, and Shivi Prasad Madhukar. Some of the things that were discussed were course name changes. Legal foundations of business will now be called Business and Consumer Law. Engineering Design and Drawing 1 will now be called Engineering Design 1. Advanced Engineering Design and Drawing will now be called Engineering Design 2. The following courses will be added to the high school program: Introduction to Interior Design, Tomorrow's Teachers, Business Management, Dance For, AP Capstone Seminar and Research Two-Year Program, Advanced Architectural Drawing, and Video Production 2. Several grouping procedures, placement criteria for middle and high school courses were also discussed. Discussions will continue over the next couple of weeks. The district will be offering several summer programs to help students transition to new courses, particularly from middle school to high school. An update was done on the ELA Collaborative Classroom Pilot, including survey data, student feedback, and benchmark and running record data. The science pilot was also discussed. This included a discussion on professional development materials and feedback so far. The committee also discussed STAR reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Facilities, Ms. Conway.
The Finance and Facilities Committee met on February 18th at 4 o'clock at the Education Center. In attendance was Ralph Eriko, Dr. Bragan, Dan Mashad, Ken Taylor, and myself. The committee discussed the district's efforts in providing the information about the March 10th, 2020 referendum to the public. The board and administration have actively sought means of communication that would reach the most residents, including the district's website, group meetings, mailers, and discussions at televised public board meetings. The administration encourages any resident that has questions regarding the referendum to contact a member of the administration or a board member. Jean Peritonee, Marcus Rosenau, Dan Spatten, Jack, and Keith Smith from SSP Architects discussed the Woodrow Wilson Middle School modular classroom addition problem, in which a water main runs under the modular classrooms. Middlesex-- Middlesex Water Company will be providing a proposal for diverting the water main around the classroom addition. The committee also discussed the brick facade project for the modular classrooms at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. SSP Architects are preparing the specifications for the bid. The work is anticipated to be completed during the summer of 2020. Mr. Eriko gave the committee a status update on the Edison High School turf baseball field. Decisions have been made on the fencing and dugout requirements, and a change order from FieldTurf will be provided with the proposed costs. FieldTurf requires the infield and outfield color scheme by the end of February to allow enough time to order the materials. The anticipated completion date is sometime in April 2020. The meeting adjourned at 5:10 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Okay, announcements by Board President. Our next caucus meeting will be Tuesday, March 17th, so where are you agreeing? St. Patrick's Day?[1770.12] At the Education Center at 7:00 PM. Then our public meeting will be Monday, March 23rd at JP Stevens High School at 7:00 PM. At this time, board member open discussion. Mrs. Maroney.
I'm glad you remembered my name.
I'm telling you, I'm getting old.
Thank you, Ralph. I want to thank Brian McGrath, Kelly Vapa, and the entire school community of Herbert Hoover Middle School for their empathy and sensitive actions toward the family of the student who passed away from Herbert Hoover recently. Without going into detail, the school community has gone beyond expectations to help the family through this difficult time. I wanted to make this acknowledgement so that the greater Edison community knows that we are raising empathetic children in Edison and can also be witnessed by the students who were here tonight from Edison High, who also showed their compassion for the child's family who passed away at the Early Learning Center. So, to me, this is extremely important. Last week, Mr. Ian Hockley was down from Connecticut and in one day did two assemblies for the 6th and 7th graders at Herbert Hoover. He, this was their initial movement towards adopting the Wingman program. And what was so exciting to Mr. Hockley and me was that some of the children who were in our program last year from Monroe and Ben Franklin knew that Mr. Hockley was coming and wore their Wingman shirts from last year. Gave us a really great hello and told us they can't wait till next year when they can be Wingman again. And what's important there is, you know, when we first started talking about bringing this program to Edison as the pilot district, people were skeptical about sustainability. And I think by seeing these children coming with their shirts saying, "We can't wait, we can't wait, we can't wait," we see that the effects are really taking hold. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. And in the same day, Mr. Hockley and I went over to JP Stevens with Herbert Ossie and Patty Kutila, former principal of Woodrow Wilson, and we began training the first group from JP Stevens. And they are going to continue with their training very shortly. And, Mr. Ross, you're next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroney. Any other open discussion? Mrs. Podolsky.
Through Lyndon LPTO, I received a flyer that was going out to the parents. And I represent the board at Lyndon L. So, I was very excited. It's from Edison High School, for Edison High School Theater Day. And the students in theater at Edison High School are presenting a workshop, or a series of workshops, for students in elementary and middle school, letting them know about the different parts of the drama program here, which I thought was appropriate during National Art Month.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Just two things, or three things, one, I'd like to piggyback on what Mrs. Maroney just said about Herbert Hoover. It was a sad situation. Dr. Bragan and Mr. McGrath and the Hoover family stepped up and helped that parent as much as they could with whatever she needed at the time. So, again, I'd like to thank Dr. Bragan and Mr. McGrath from Herbert Hoover. The Eagles keep moving on in basketball. They're in the semifinals this Wednesday, 5:30, at New Brunswick High School, versus Bishop Bar, or now St. Thomas, I guess it's called. It's the first time they've been in the semifinals, I was told, since the 60s. So, some of you weren't even born in the 60s. So, good luck to them. I'll be there. And then, the same night, the ETEA has its charity volleyball game, where the staff comes together to raise money for various charities throughout the town and community. And as always, the ETA does wonderful things for our community. So, hopefully, people could come out and cheer their staffs on at the volleyball tournament on Wednesday. It's at, I believe, 5:30 at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. No, I'm sorry. JP Stevens, that's right, I'm sorry. JP Stevens, 6 o'clock. Thank you. 5:30 to register, how's that? All right, thank you. Right now, public comments. Anyone? Mr. D.
He's coming down to change it. Right behind you. You do have a security guy. Stand next to you. Hold on, I'll turn the mic on.
Tony Dipasqual, Pute Pine Street. First thing I want to do is I want to publicly thank Dr. Bragan. As he spoke, I think it was last week, about the bus issues that people were having. People contacted me, contacted him, I contacted him about it. And those were resolved, including a special-needs child just recently was taken care of. I got a call from the parent, was really excited about that. I also want to thank Mr. Ross. I know about another situation that was taken care of with another special-needs parent that was just, you know, parent again, was very ecstatic about that. So, you know, that process is working, encouraging parents to, you know, contact, you know, the school administration, transportation, just to solve whatever issues were out there, instead of them just lingering and not being solved. So, Dr. Bragan, well, thank you for that. So, something that I do want to bring up, there's some confusion going on amongst some people. And it is, and it's about this meeting this Thursday, the Town Hall. And the reason there's some confusion is because I saw an ad from rEdison.com saying that they were sponsoring the Town Hall on Thursday at Lincoln School. The question here is, rEdison.com is, the owner of rEdison.com is actually connected to the law firm that is the bond lawyer for the school bond. So, first issue I have is, is that I see a conflict of interest there because the law firm is going to make money if the bond does pass. So, they are sponsoring an event Thursday at the school, but now I'm hearing otherwise that, now, it does say RSVP to them, but then I'm also hearing otherwise that this is actually not sponsored by them. It's sponsored by the school or Dr. Bragan or... So, you know, the question is, is it open for everybody? According to this ad here, I don't know if you guys have seen this, okay? Or is it only open to certain people and you have to RSVP them? Because I did two days ago and didn't get a response. I know somebody else who did, didn't get a response. Are we allowed to go, or are we not? Are there, you know, that's the first thing. But again, as I have said multiple times to the board, integrity is really, really important with the board. Conflict of interests are really, really something that we need to be careful because the public, you're trusting them to vote on $189 million. Even if there's a little bit of a question of conflict of interest, that just continuously knocks down the trust between the citizens and the board. And it's just something that we need to be careful with, you know, on who's getting involved in what. You know, because my question is, okay, is rEdison.com, are they paying to use the school to sponsor this if they are sponsoring it? If they're not sponsoring it, well, then, there's something wrong with this ad that shouldn't say that they're sponsoring it and RSVP to them. So, I don't know, yeah, if we can have some clarity, just so the public knows what's going on.
I'll let Dr. Bragan answer.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, a couple of things, Tony, and thanks for the comments. One is that, just to get the number right, it's 183 million.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 183 million, it was knocked down.
$215 per year for the average homeowner? $18 a month? Or $60 a day? $60 cents a day. Nonetheless, the meeting is February 27th. It's at Lincoln Elementary School at 6:00 PM. And it's sponsored by us, the school, to get information out. So, anyone and everyone can attend it.
Okay.
I contacted some people that said that they would facilitate a type of interview and videotape it and put it out on the website, whether that was the rEdison website or not, I don't know.
Right, right.
But the idea was that to facilitate a discussion where anyone and everyone could come.
Sure.
Ask their questions. Have myself, have some members of SSP there, have Dan Mashad as our financial advisor there, as our financial expert for the district. And just to have that dialogue and discussion. So, we'll try to get that information out and clarify. It was an opportunity for us, the district, to get the information out. Provide a forum for the public, yourself and whoever else is interested, to answer those questions that people have about the referendum, about finance, and about anything. And I think it's important to have the discussions, and I think that's the appropriate venue to do it.
Hundred percent, and I have no issue with that. It was the confusion of...
What they put up.
Who's sponsoring it? And, you know, again, that's, and who's connected to what?
And as you know, Tony, on Facebook, anyone could post anything and start a website.
And that's...
And so, that's the reason why I know you came here to get the straighten arrow.
Right, well, that's the reason why, because, again, people are asking me questions, and I'm like, well, I don't know. I have to go to the source to find out what's really going on. And if rEdison, you know, is made a mistake in how they're promoting it, it just needs to be fixed because, again, it unfortunately makes you guys look like there's something, it just doesn't jive here. And that's what I just keep on, you know, because what you guys do affects my children and everybody else's children. So, the better you guys do, the better it is for everybody.
Understood.
It's just, what I always keep in mind, you know, about the work you guys do, because it's really that important. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tony Agar. First of all, I don't get out much. Babysitting occupies my time five days a week, right there? If anything I say or ask is on the websites and just tell me, then please interrupt me, tell me to go home and turn on the TV.
Sure.
I appreciate that. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, I'm on the National Committee for the Science Olympiad. It's a competition with 23 events in technologies and science. March 10th, this is my March 10th, not yours. March 10th at Middlesex County College, we're having the state competition. And it's going to be 27 top schools from the state of New Jersey and 27 middle schools from the state of New Jersey. They will be competing in 27, I'm sorry, 23 different events in science and technology. It's going to be all day. Edison High, this is their first year for Edison High. They competed, first it starts with regionals, goes to the state, and then it goes to the national. At the regional level, Edison High came in, JP Stevens came in. So, they're going to be at Middlesex County College, March 10th, competing. The best in the states go on to the nationals, which are held in the University of North Carolina this year in May. And the best in the states, I'm sorry, the best in all the states will get financial scholarships and what have you. So, it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of competition, teams from each school. But I'd like to, I mean, JP has been with me a long time. Edison High has been with me a long time. JP's actually been in the competition for a number of years now. JP, Edison High, this is their first year. When I approached Mr. Ross, he said, "The door is open, take what you need." So, I took teachers and students, and they didn't want to jump in immediately, like, don't jump into something that might be a little bit overwhelming. So, the teachers came and they actually helped me, the Edison teachers helped me, helped the committee, helped the state, run the different events. And one of the, two of the people that come every year from Edison High do the forensics event, Brian Murtagh, and Sherry Gugensheim, that's her maiden name, I just love the sound of it. Sherry's, let me see, Sherry's new name? What the hell is it? I can't find it.
Mr. Ross, do you know Sherry's new name? Yunaski.
What is it?
Yunaski?
Ah, Gugensheim, sorry. But these two teachers have been with me for a number of years running forensics. And I think for them, they actually practice what they teach. They actually get to hone their skills, they come in every year. And this year, it's going to be Edison High facing them and JP facing them. The coaches for the Edison High, who actually bring the kids there, is, if I can, Rudy Singe and Martin Goldman. And of course, Mr. Ross, a great contributor, greatest supporter of this event, never giving me any trouble, just loves to do it with the kids. And the coaches from JP Stevens is Kristy Gisvaldo and Kristen Guama. And I've never met this gentleman, but it's Dr. Anthony Shalap, he's the new principal?
Yes, he was just here.
He was?
Yeah, he was here.
Oh, I've never met him.
All right. Next time you come and he's here, we'll introduce you.
Okay, I appreciate that. But it's a lot of fun. If you get a chance, stick yourself, and it's like 18 kids to a team, times 54 schools running the campus over. We own the campus for the day, because it's during their shutdown period. But it's a great thing for Edison High, I love seeing them there, they're great kids, and JP Stevens, too.
March 10th, at what time?
Edison, all day.
All day? It's a Tuesday.
That is correct. And it's always during that week, you know, if you could stick your head in, I know you've got other things going on.
We'll vote, and then we'll go there.
I beg your pardon?
We'll vote, and then we'll go there.
Yeah, that's the day to vote for the referendum. March 10th. Tony, where's Tony? He left.
The second thing I'd like to talk about is, Dr. Bragan, I haven't had a chance to get out much, so I'd like to welcome him as the superintendent.
Well, thank you.
And I mean that, I hope you're doing well here. But there's a couple of things, so I don't get aggravated at the end of the year. According to the paper, it said you make $245,000 a year, 2% increase each year. And what am I missing?
That's it.
I think that's it.
And health benefits.
O'Malley would never have said stuff like that.
No, he wouldn't, that's why he's not here any longer.
What about bonuses?
What?
Bonuses.
There are no bonuses.
No bonuses. That was part of the deal.
This is the best deal you could, I mean, you should have seen it.
He tried harder, but the board stuck to egg.
Just saying on that, you know, and my...
There's no perks here, or nothing?
No.
No, my contract should be transparent, and, you know, it was also approved by the, not only Executive County Superintendent, but at the last minute by the Commissioner of Education as well, on the day of approval. So, it is what it is, I'm going to try to, my best, earn every penny.
You've got a tough, tough, tough thing, tough road. The last thing I'd like to talk about is the year March 10th, which is that referendum. I am totally confused with it. I'm confused in, well, let's go back a little bit. You have a committee here called Facilities and Finances. And what do they do? You say you get the word out. I haven't bumped into anybody in my neighborhood that knows there's an election going on March 10th. There's been nothing, no, nothing, nothing, nothing. The only way I do is when I have coffee with the seniors at McDonald's in the morning, and they bring these things up. And then I go home and I try to find out more about them. The only thing I know has been reduced by 80, by $6 million.
$6 million.
That's all I know. All right? But you say the word is out.
Well, can I?
Can I win that?
Go ahead.
We're trying to get the word out, sir. Tony, right, Tony Agar?
Yeah.
We first started trying to get the word out through the schools. And, you know, a couple of things I'd like to say at the onset is that I came into the district on December 9th, and I think the vote was December 10th, if I got it correct on the last time. So, people are saying, "Well, this referendum isn't really yours, Dr. Bragan, it's somebody else, you're just moving along." That's really not accurate. We spent a lot of time looking at it. We spent a lot of time looking at the overcrowding at all the districts, at all the schools throughout the district. And we looked at the plan that was proposed. And what we did, we took the plan, that was 189.5 million, and we said, "What can we cut that may be considered superfluous that we don't necessarily need to specifically address the overcrowding?" And we cut some things. I still think we need them in the long run, but not directly tied to this, some field stuff and some facility space outside of the actual classroom space. But we need the classroom space. This referendum, I do endorse it as a superintendent. I know they've tried over the last 12 years or so to come up with different plans. Some involve new schools, some involve bigger programs, some involve smaller ones, and they weren't successful. So, when we looked at the overall plan, we tweaked it as best we could, and we do believe this is the best plan we have. It's 183.1.2 million dollars, I believe. And we're trying to get the information out to our schools. We gave our school community the charge of that, to get it out publicly. We have flyers, you can see there at all the schools. Tomorrow, we have a mailing going out to all the families in our district, 11,000 households. There'll be a flyer going out, informational with that. Another thing that I want to say we did, but I actually paid for it from my own checking account. You know the billboard outside the board office on Route 1 South?
Yes, I do.
Well, there'll be information going up there, it's actually up there now. Every six minutes, every hour, you know, we get a six minutes worth for what it was worth. It cost me $2,000 to do that. So, people ask, "Why would you do that? Why would you spend your own money?" Well, one, as you said, Tony, they pay me enough, right? I should be able to have $2,000. But the second thing, more importantly, is that I have skin in the game. I'm committed to this, I think it's the right thing to do. I'm owning it as superintendent, I'm promoting it, I'm getting the information out. I bought a billboard, you know, six minutes worth anyway, every hour. And that's the equivalent of what it would cost the average taxpayer for almost 10 years. So, I don't live here anymore. I may when my daughter graduates school again. I grew up here, but we need to do this. Our schools are overcrowded, and if anyone doesn't know that or questions that, I ask you to come see me. Come schedule time with me, I'll walk you to all the schools. I'll see Monroe School, where it's a beautiful facility on the way our educational program should be. And that school actually at this time is not overcrowded. And then we'll go to Lincoln School, go to John P. Stevens School, go to Edison High School, where we have 3,000 unhoused students. 3,000 more students than we really have appropriate space for us. than we really have appropriate space for, so we have to do something, I'm going to work, if you want to work with me, Tony, help get the message out to your coffee group, I'll go talk to them, I like coffee, and I like you, I think. So, you know, we'll, we'll do whatever we can do to get the message out, and we want to get it to everyone, you know, some people say, "Well, you don't want to get it to the senior citizens," I disagree with that, for, wholeheartedly, for a number of reasons. One is, I'm approaching that age, but the other thing is, that it's, it's short-sighted to say that senior citizens would always vote no, because of their income status or their stage in life. My parents always voted yes, my grandparents voted yes when we were long out of school. So I, I don't believe that about our senior community, but even if they are, the group's intention is to vote no, they deserve to have the information as well, and I will talk to anyone and everyone.
The, you know, the only thing that doesn't go up is my income.
I understand it.
Oh.
I got two percent a year for me, but I do understand as someone on a fixed income, it's difficult, as time goes on.
It is, it's, the thing is, it's just confusing, I mean, there's a, she's not here tonight, but she ran on a platform for reelection, and she, her, listed her accomplishments in bloated budgets and fraud, right? I mean, what is she talking about? Why isn't that registering with me? Why am I confused? What is she trying to say? Uh, she's telling me bloated budgets, so I, I'm not going to talk about bloated budgets, I'm not, I'm not going into that, we have this. You say you have a meeting the twenty-seventh, and I can get questions on that?
Yep, absolutely.
And that's what, at what school?
Lincoln Elementary School at six P M.
Right on.
If you have questions ahead of time, you can email them, and we'll make sure we get, get them addressed publicly for you.
Well, currently I'm voting no, until you can change my mind.
All right.
There are
I got two weeks.
I'm easy. You know, it's, uh, I, I'd like to read something, but, uh, maybe I shouldn't, but I think I will. It's, uh, "The likelihood of passing a referendum can be affected by the time of the year that a school board decides to hold that, validating, April is best. Whether it is a renovation, which flares better than new construction, or in addition, whether it contains facilities or athletes or at least successful items, and of course, the amount of money requested under ten million attracts more support than over ten million. Should they get enough votes to pass the referendum? School board, school board members, few if any, of whom are experts in construction, take a fiduciary responsibility for spending tens of million dollars, with which they have little knowledge, little knowledge more than to, to get the space than to do to get a space vehicle to Mars." That is written by a member of the board of education here in Edison.
Gene Medoff.
Huh?
Gene Medoff.
Hey, you're okay.
Unfortunately, April is not a, a date that we can use anymore, so, but, yes, I understand what Gene was trying to say. Yep, no, understood.
But, uh, I, I don't recommend you reading this, because it really turns you off on a, on a lot of little things going around about, uh, when he was a member of the school board, president of the school board, Gene. But I'll be at this meeting, and it's, what, you did give me a time, right?
Six P M.
Six P M.
Lincoln School, this Thursday.
All right.
All right.
If you wanted to talk before that, though, Tony, really, seriously, I, I mean what I said, your group, want to have coffee, I'll even buy the coffee, and we'll chat.
Let's
Let me know when.
You know I'm going to get a senior coffee.
That's okay. I'll get you two then.
All right, Dan, I'll spend eighty cents on you.
Yeah.
Thank you for taking the time to hear me.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I got a few questions.
Name, name and address, please.
Jim Kelly, drought twenty-seven, Edison.
Thank you.
Uh, what grade makes up the primary school?
K one-two.
K one-two.
Right?
K one-two.
K one-two. Okay, uh, on the property, properties of, uh, Thomas Jefferson, Hoover, and back of J P, uh, J P, there's plenty of property, why don't we build primary there to, to, uh, cover your problems with, uh, all-day kindergarten and stuff like that?
Well, if you look at some of the schools, J P is a ton of wetlands, we explored building between John Adams and J P, we were told that we couldn't, because it's wetlands.
Okay.
Um, other buildings like T J we're looking at, behind T J, you said?
Yeah, I, yeah, T, behind the T J
Ton of property there, there's a lot of property there, problem is, if we build another school there, again, we're looking at every option, um, then the traffic becomes a huge issue.
We were supposed to build, there was, school was supposed to be built, uh, built behind, on there, and it was
Years ago, yes.
Yeah, a few years back.
And then we had a lot of issues with the traffic study, access to the roads there. Um, we are exploring, Dr. Bregan, and I don't want to, um, expose any, what we're exploring, but we're exploring other buildings
Okay.
That are existing and non-existing, and property.
Uh, the, uh, has there ever been a study on the time that it takes a student in, in Edison, Edison to get from class to class, from what's, say, the new science wing to, if you have, you had to go to lunch?
Yeah, Dr., I know, uh, Dr. Shalap and Mr. Ross have those, and they actually, they have staggered lunches and classes to be able to get from one point to the other.
Kind of, I know
It's not ideal, but
I know, when I worked here in the building, I'm going back many, many moons ago, the kids, in order to get to class on time, used to go outside, walk around, and come in through the custodian entrance by the calf.
Mm-hmm.
And since then, you've added it, more and more additions, and bigger problems, so if that, you've got to have the same problem, and you're talking about putting more additions too.
Right.
What you need to do is build a new, a new high school. Addition is just making a bad problem worse, I think.
That is something that a board member has brought up, and board members have brought up. Um, the concern there is finding a piece of property, one that we're, we're looking, all right, because you're going to probably need fifty to seventy-five acres to build another high school. Um, and right now, the only property that's available in that size is privately owned, and we're being told anywhere from a million dollars to a million and a half dollars an acre. So before you even build a building, you're going to be paying about fifty to seventy-five million dollars for the piece of property. And if I go by what New Brunswick cost to build that high school, which was close to three hundred thousand, so you're talking about four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty million for a high school. But we're looking at all the options, all the board members are working hard to look at pieces of property around a township that is privately owned and maybe township-owned.
Uh, not, a suggestion, I don't know if it would work, and probably it wouldn't, is Metatchen, uh, is that, are they overcrowded too?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah.
What about a possibility of getting together with Metatchen, build a new high school, and change, let's say, Metatchen High School into a school of science, in order to, to make it apt, so for both districts could
It's a possibility, we could get together with the Metatchen Board of Ed and have a discussion with them. You know, I know we're, we're talking to, uh, different entities, entities within the town, um, it's, again, whatever we need to do or could do at the cheapest possible price, uh, we're going to try to do to fix the overcrowding issue.
And, and the last thing that was brought to my attention, uh, the schools are not having, or most of the schools are not having anything honoring Veterans Day on Veterans Day. Uh, Mr. Mashad can tell you what J P, what T J used to do, I don't expect any school to do what T J did, but from what I've been told, it was completely ignored, ignored this year. It's not, it should never be ignored, it should be assemblies of something at every school.
You won't have a disagreement from me, Dr. Bregan will look into that for next time.
Agreed.
A superintendent school, you should make sure that that happens.
We will, I give you my word on that.
Yep.
And talk to Mr. Mashad about T J.
Yep.
I, I remember the helicopter, I remember the whole event.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, Mr. Capatio, he used to take care of that.
Mr. Capatio was unbelievable for, for that and for Flag Day.
Absolutely.
I, I just want to respond to something that you said, thank you for thinking outside of the box. Um, I think the idea of making Metatchen High School a STEM academy is really a very, very good idea, and us jointly going into a third high school together. The problem, and this is the consistent problem in New Jersey, and it's why we're all spending so much money, is that towns don't want to give up their autonomy, and, you know, sooner or later, we're going to have to.
But I, by making them the school of science, that gives them a little bit of prestige, and it, it would be pulling your best science teachers from all three schools to, so I would think that that would, would work. Same would be if you did a similar thing with Highland Park for, uh, for Forming Arts, something, something in that order.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Brunner?
Bill Brunner, two fifteen Loring Avenue. I was very pleased to see that you passed the resolution tonight, bringing back Jonathan Borch's law firm as our legal counsel. Uh, I see that the, it only lasts till June thirtieth, I would assume and hope that you extend that for many years to come. Uh, they're good people, and I don't care what they cost, frankly, they did a, a good job for us, too. Uh, another thing I was very pleased to see, something we don't see, haven't seen in the last, gosh knows how many years, our superintendent and our president of the board, both attended our Edison High School boys' basketball games, something private, previous, uh, people in that position did not. Thank you, Dr. Bregan, and of course, Ralph, you're always at the games, now you're there as a board president.
I know, that's a big deal, huh?
Big difference. And in reference to recent comments on the Metatchen schools and our schools, frankly, if I lived in that delightful little town of Metatchen, I wouldn't want to give up a darn thing. They've got a good thing going, and I wouldn't want to give it up at all, I don't care what you offer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. Yes, sir.
My name is David Brennan, I live at eleven ninety-three in Mann Avenue. Uh, first, I very much appreciate your comments, having been in finance for twenty-five years, uh, I can only echo them. Uh, I don't believe the expertise is on this board to manage a number of this fashion, and I think if you look at the overall spend, three hundred million dollars, uh, this board and prior boards have already proven that. Uh, when I look at, or think about this referendum, which has already failed, and I think is being pushed on the township residents, again, unfairly, I think you're overspent and underfunded, and that's basically what you're claiming with one hundred and eighty-three million dollars. So my question to you, uh, Mr. Bregan, is this, or Bregan, is this, what is the, break the cost of the referendum out for me, what is the principal cost, the interest cost, and the legacy cost?
First of all, it's Dr. Bregan, and I appreciate that, um, Mr. Brennan. Um, I don't have the particulars and intricacies of all the financing right now, we do have a bond council that'll go over that, if you want to go over the actualization of what the cost will be each year, um, when the bond referendum is approved, I'd be more than happy to sit down and go over that with you, if you wanted me to print it out somewhere, I'll do that, but I don't have that off the top of my head. And regarding the expertise in the construction of the projects, that's why we have architects, and people that manage the actual buildings, as they take place from design phase to implementation. You are correct, myself included, as well as the board, we are not architects, we are not experts in building, but we have people that do that, and that's what most organizations of this size would do. Um, I disagree with you, the referendum is needed, we are not overspend it, and we are not underfunded, and that's my position.
Fair enough, but I wasn't talking about architects, what I was, what I was talking about was finance expertise. That has not existed on this board. Where do you go to, to obtain that expertise? That cannot be your cost manager that you have on staff.
Our financial expert is Dan Mashad, who's been our school business administrator since nineteen eighty-six, and I trust his, um, expertise with finance second to none. Regarding long-term financing, we go to a bond council, that's what people do at this stage, and we get their advice, and we seek it, and then we go out with the bonds, and we bid them to get the best price available.
So then therefore, the number you quote, the two hundred and
Nothing was two hundred, a hundred and eighty-three point one-nine.
No, 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 the monthly cost.
Two hundred and fifteen dollars per month, that's the, the
That is the cost that that is
Two hundred and fifteen dollars is the most it would cost, an annual cost.
But that is not including the legacy cost, so in other words, the headcount increases that would come from that, the fringe cost that would come from that.
That's the total cost, the most amount that the referendum could possibly cost, does that include the annual tax cost? No, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about the cost.
No, but it is, you're, you're floating a hundred and eighty-three million dollars, and you don't know the relevant components.
That's not accurate, I do know the relevant components.
It is accurate, no you don't.
That's your opinion.
It, it's an accurate opinion.